Come on, O2.
He was over there talking like I normally do. They see you back to your seat.
A little bottle of settle and we'll be ready to do something.
Oh, yeah. We'll set this place on fire.
There you go.
All right, here we are.
All right, I'd like to call our council meeting Wednesday, July, or January. There we go, just dreaming. January 25th at 7:07 to order. And just start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. Stand, take your hat off, do the Pledge of Allegiance, after which we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hegberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Present.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Mr. Ricart? Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Schultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Present.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix? We have a quorum.
Okay. Want to acknowledge we had an executive session from 6:30 till 6:40 regarding conditional use public hearing under Section 708A, 4 and 15 of the Sunshine Act.
4 and 5.
And 4 and 5.
A, 4 and 5.
A, 4 and 5, pardon me. Okay. I would also like to introduce our Boy Scout troop here. With the, I guess, Scoutmaster? Okay, one of the leaders. Introduce yourself and your troop and tell us.
Troop 105 in St. Matthews Lutheran Church, some of you know.
What's your name again?
We're looking on citizenship in the Community Merit badge and we're taking an annual meeting to see what goes on.
Sorry, your name again, please, for the minutes?
Gordon Loic.
Okay. L-O-I-C?
L-I, double L, I-C-H.
Okay. Welcome all.
Thank you.
I remember doing the same a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
All right, it's like four years.
Don't you mean decades ago?
Maybe it's four decades ago, anyway. Our junior council people are not here, so I guess we'll skip over.
We have public comment.
Oh, pardon me, we have public comment. That's here under the notes. Those in the audience with any public comment, please? All right. Any digital participants?
Where's our junior councils? They're all like our president. They were letting me have enough.
Guess we're okay there? All right, that takes care of that. Thank you. Under Item 6, junior council persons, unfortunately, they're not here. I guess they didn't have school, I'm not quite exactly sure. So we'll forward Sections or Part 6 to the next meeting. Number 7, the consent agenda, Items A through H. Can I have a motion for approval?
No motion. Well, second, whatever.
Okay. A second, please.
Here. Do you take me first for the motion or down there? What'd you do?
I put Chris and then you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Got it. Okay, so on the next group, the Council Workshop Finance Personnel Committee, that would be mine. Item 1 would be 1A through D regarding tax collection of basically prior years. Can I have a motion to approve that?
No motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that?
Because we need this.
Yeah.
Okay, so those in favor, or do we need a, if it's morning, do we need a roll call for that?
No.
Okay. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. That brings us to Item 2, consideration of a motion to approve Ordinance 2337 for the appropriation of $40,000 to Main Street Hanover per Justine's presentation at our previous meeting.
No, I already advertised it.
Okay. On Item 2, motion?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay.
Just need a second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
The motion passes with nine in favor of and zero against.
Okay. Item 3, consideration of a motion to approve Ordinance 2338 for the appropriation of $15,000 to the HEDC for, to continue their efforts. Apparently, I can make the motion, so I need a second.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? All right. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need a roll call vote for that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Motion passes with nine in favor of and zero against.
Thank you very much. Item 4, consideration of a motion to request an RFP to solicit bids from contractors to provide fundraising development services, basically fundraising, for our Guthrie Memorial Library. I'm making the motion, so may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have, in pay, if we do accept a bid for this, I know one time we had discussed it and they said when we have a fund, hiring a group like this, some of them take the proceeds out of the fundraising themselves or we pay them.
Or a percentage of what they collect or what have you, right.
Have we, are we going both ways on this, to wait to see what the bids are when they come in? Or are we going by one directive only?
I don't believe the RFP has been written yet, so they can specify it and whichever.
Either way or.
Generally, you can request.
We would still have to approve it.
Right.
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 But you could go and/or.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. We see what we get back for proposals, but this, to your previous request, if I remember, Mrs. Funk, this makes this position more of a performance-based pay.
Right, I remember discussing that.
As opposed to a fixed amount.
Right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
So we have a second?
Yes.
Do we need a roll call? No? Okay, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. Item 5, consideration of a motion to approve a settlement agreement and an access agreement between 333 Realty and the Borough and Thomas Allison and Rhonda Allison to ensure proper access to the adjacent properties owned by the Borough of Hanover and the Allisons for an unopened, undedicated, 10-foot-wide alley.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No? Roll call?
No.
Okay, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll go to reports of the standing committees, governance and policy. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you, President Rowland. I ask for consideration of a motion to approve the purchase, and I'm adding the comment, if necessary, that implementation of a timing system for public comment. Apparently, maybe there's another way to do it, we don't have to purchase something. That's what I've been told. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Rupp made a motion of second. Any questions, discussion?
No, I thank you, Barb, for taking that second.
You don't have to thank me.
Yeah, I didn't find out until after the meeting last week. And they left us no, a gentleman who is involved in High Tech said that these units can actually do the timing.
Well, it would've been nice for the rest of us to be informed.
Why?
It would've been nice for the rest of us to be informed.
I know, and I said, I wish we would've known. Well, I didn't know at the time, okay?
Okay, well, let's, we're good with that. So, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Public Works and Facilities, Mr. Kress?
Consideration of a motion to approve a civil site planning proposal including authorizing, authorization for staff to work with the architect to secure contracts for professional services related to the site survey, design and land planning work for the proposed administration, public safety facility and public works campus.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Kress? Okay. Do we need a roll call?
No.
No? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Kress. Enhancement Committee, Mr. Hegberg?
Great. Consideration of motion to accept Dewberry Engineering Mechanicsburg, PA, made 2022 proposal for the feasibility study to implement Hanover Downtown Streetscape and Beautification Plan and authorize staff in the Borough Solicitor to develop a professional services agreement for subsequent execution by the Hanover Borough Council.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. No roll call?
No.
Okay. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
No.
All right. Item 2, Mr. Hegberg?
Consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of the following citizen advisors to the Hanover Borough Council Enhancement Committee, Brian Johnson, Austin Graham and Isaac Riston.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay. Again, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegberg. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Lockard?
Thank you. Request consideration of a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2339, amending Ordinance Number 2295 to designate the Snack Town Brew Fest as a priority event under the Special Event Ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lockard regarding his proposal? Need a roll call vote for that?
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
We have nine voting in favor of and zero against, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lockard? Are you good?
Yeah, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you all. We'll come to the mayor's report. Mayor Whitman?
This is my report for December. December 9th, the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce hosted their annual holiday luncheon. This year's well-attended luncheon kicked off their 100th anniversary year celebration. The charismatic keynote speaker was Luke Bernstein, President and CEO of the Pennsylvania Chamber of Business and Industry. The chamber recognized Stan Saylor for his many years of service in the PA House, serving since 1993. Congressman Lloyd Smucker, Senator Kristen Phillips Hill and PA State Rep Kate Klunk also addressed the chamber members on a variety of topics. December 14th, Hanover Borough PD held our annual holiday breakfast and meeting. During the meeting, Officer Robert Kesselring received a letter of achievement and Sergeant Matthew Watersdorf and receptionist Juanita Weaver each received a commendation. For continuing education, Dr. Charlene Lane with Messiah University did an interactive presentation as part of the Handle with Care program on the daily issues police officers experience and coping mechanisms they can employ. In the afternoon, UPMC Hanover held the unveiling of the much-needed, enlarged and improved emergency department, which now includes a dedicated section to safely and securely handle mental health emergencies and admissions. And that evening, the Borough of Hanover was the recipient of the Trail Organization Award presented by the York County Rail Trail Authority during their holiday party. Eric Maynes, Director of Planning and Engineering, and A.J. Grimm, Public Works Director, were there with me to accept this honor. We have been and remain a committed partner in the evolution of the Hanover Trolley Trail. In 2022, Hanover was formally added to the York County Trail Towns Program. We are progressively developing the action plan and its implementation as the trail continues to expand. And then I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow at Fat Bat, there is a ribbon cutting for, I guess it's a.
Bicycle repair.
Bicycle repair station that they actually received a grant from the YCEA for. So, you're all welcome to come out for that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Whitman. That, I guess, brings us to the Fire Commission. Chief Klauscher?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, so try to keep, keep it brief as I can, so I don't take up too much of your time, because we're right on schedule here for meetings. It's not like, not like the other meetings.
Don't screw it up, right?
So, our January meeting was our reorganization meeting, just like council goes through every two years. We recognized our representatives from Penn Township. It's Mike Brown and Mark Elstness, with the alternate being Mr. Allison. Hanover Borough, Councilman Ricart and Lockard, and the alternate, Mr. Kress. And then our volunteer representatives are Jeff Spielman and Steve Otis, and the alternate, Ray Kinsey. We had our member-at-large, who happened to be our chairman, which was Bert Elsner, promised us three years, and that expired December 31st. So we're still actively searching for a businessperson or a member-at-large. They either have to be a resident of the borough or the township or own a business in the borough or the township. I think the Finance Personnel Committee for the commission is going to be interviewing somebody this week. But again, that's only, that's only the first person, so.
So do you have active candidates, or do you?
We have one.
Help from us, or?
Well, obviously, if you know anybody that would be interested, please send them my way, or.
Okay, so anyone, knows anyone that thinks might be qualified? Please let Chief Klauscher know.
So, we've held the appointment of the chair, because typically that member-at-large serves as a chair. Mr. Ricart was reappointed as the vice chair. The, my new admin, April Wetzel, is our secretary. And Mr. Otis is our treasurer. We introduced Manager Lewis to the, to the group. I'm hoping that we made a decent impression on her.
She didn't run away?
No. She didn't. So, then we got to conducting business. We are putting up our third ambulance. About two years ago, I came to our board and our ambulance was costing us too much money. It was the beginning of COVID and the call volume was way down. And we were running that ambulance 12 hours a day, seven days a week. So we decided to take it out of service. And that ambulance was stationed at the Clearview Station. At the end of this year, we decided it was time to put that truck back up. So we will get the third truck back in service for the community. It'll probably be, put it either the Clearview Station or the downtown station, because it's only going to run peak hours, which right now is going to be like 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, or 9:00 to 5:00, just Monday through Friday. And the board was insistent that we will not be using overtime to fill that position, to keep costs down, which is reasonable, and was my intent to begin with. We also adopted our 2023 budget. We added Mr. Otis and Manager Lewis as authorized signatories for the commission, which has been historic, that the managers are signatories to sign our checks for us. We talked about Work Park Fire Station down here North Franklin Street. We developed, or found out, we had a gas leak, natural gas leak outside. So the pipe from the gas meter into the building is underground. It's a three-inch line. And being that the building was built in 81, it just failed. So we have a plumber who is going to be, he's actually there today working. So in about four days, we should have transformer blue today. A few hours, I believe. So it's about 50 feet of pipe, just on the outside of the building materials. We also ordered for. Turned a lease agreement with lease. About 166,000. At the end of the hour, with no buyer. We're actually transferring money from our capital reserves to help cover the cost of that.
Thank you.
Or the down payment of that. For EMS, our patient call volume was up this year by 265 calls, giving us a total of a little over 4,800 calls. And that doesn't take into consideration the 312 calls that we missed in the borough and the township because of only having two trucks. At the end of the year, our PNL showed that we actually operated to the positive this year in EMS by $55,000.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I was very happy with that.
And that includes delinquent collection, so that's net cash.
Yep. Yep. And part of that is our staff that does our ordering of equipment has kept their materials, even though with the costing, or the call increase, and the, you know, the increase of calls, the increase of, of using.
Chief? Excuse me. What do you mean by 312 missed calls?
So those are calls that we were dispatched to, but immediately Saves or Pleasant Hill or another service got dispatched to because the two trucks that we have were both on calls. So those are not, we didn't fail to respond because we didn't have people. We failed to respond because we didn't have units available. So.
But someone else wasn't laying in the street, I think that's where Mr. Green.
It was immediately, the next unit was immediately dispatched to the call, but it's still, it's one of our citizens, we don't get the.
Yeah. Just wait, we'll be there.
Thank you. It's a good question, Harry.
And I can contest to the speed of their response time, because I owe my life to that department this, this year. So I'd like to thank you for that.
Yeah, I got, I got in trouble for that call, by the way. We didn't know how sick you were, sir. So, yeah. But part of that, it, I said it's threefold, that why we made money or why we didn't go in the hole is because our people that order our supplies are very diligent at making sure they're getting the best bang for their buck. Because as you know, everything's going up. Our EMS captain for her scheduling and our staff for their documentation. When we went on a call, our staff documents everything that they did. And then it gets reviewed by our billing manager before it's submitted to our third-party billing. And if it's missing things that it should have to say, this is the level that we bill at, she makes sure that they go back and they correct that before it gets sent to billing. The longer it takes for us to get it to billing, the more difficult it is for us to get that, that return. So the crews were doing very, very good at making sure that everything was the way it needed to be so that we could send that bill out, immediately get it repaired, or get it repaid, so. And that is, oh, the meetings, forgot that and again. We are going to start having all of our meetings at the Clover Lane Fire Station. That, that fire station is handicap accessible. Whereas going from this building and then to Penn Township and then back to this building, we had instances where we were going to the wrong location. So to make it easier on everybody and have a handicap accessible building, we decided to go to the Clover Lane Station for our meetings. You're all welcome to attend, it's the third Thursday at 5:30.
So there will be no more Fire Commission meetings here?
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
So you don't have to worry about the doors being left unlocked.
Okay.
So. And that's a bond here, and will be done next year, I believe, or the year after, so.
What do I expect from CEO of pumper like that?
20 years. Yeah. Yep, 20 years. So if you kind of extrapolate that out, it's about 55,000 a year roughly that you're looking at, so.
We have one now, I'm assuming, that we're going to retire?
Yes. Yes. We have a 2004 Sutfin that was one of the Penn Township pumpers that we brought into the commission, that'll be due to be retired, it'll be 20 years old. It'll be over 20 years old till the pumper gets here because it's 24 to 30 months delivery, ordering it this week, so.
And that has a resale value of what?
It depends on the buyer. We won't, we will not be able to sell it to a large department because they're buying new pumpers. We'll be looking at a smaller department. The last pumpers that we got rid of, we got in the neighborhood of 15,000 for. So, we may get.
Oh, so you're, you're talking like 1% or 2% of the, of the value.
Well, look how long it's depreciated out, I mean, good grief.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's 20 years old at that point.
We don't have, you know, depreciation's interesting in our world, but we don't pay taxes, so.
Do those pumps need to be rebuilt periodically? Are they supposed to last 20 years?
We have not had to rebuild any of our pumps yet. We do annual maintenance on them. We do weekly maintenance on the pump to make sure it's operating correctly. And then we do an annual service where the manufacturer comes in, or we use fire apparatus now, they come in, they go over the entire pump, they lube it, grease everything. And then annually, we also do our own in-house pump testing, where we go and make sure that the pump is pumping to performance. There's three, three levels, 100% capacity, 150% and 200% capacity pump. That we, I'm sorry, 100% capacity, 70% and 50% capacity of, of the pump. And we do that every year for every piece of apparatus that we have, as well as the annual ladder testing as well, so.
They're pretty durable, then, huh?
Yeah, yeah. And we have had some repairs that we've had to make to the pumps over the years, but nothing where we've had to take the pump out and have it rebuilt, so.
I have a question, and either you can answer it, maybe somebody from the borough. Where are we with the study that we commissioned?
That is probably best answered by.
Amy, you want to, you want to grab that?
She may.
It sort of, it sort of just vanished in.
I know, it, there was.
Right? I mean.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll provide updates for that soon. I'll give you that.
That was a good political answer.
We'll circle back.
We don't want you to commit to two months.
We're supposed to answer that way.
Goodbye, have the information.
We haven't paid them anything, correct?
Sorry?
We have not paid them anything, either.
Correct.
So, that's the good news.
Are we, we're not going to go back to start over again, right?
No.
Okay. Just, I was just curious, I figured I'd get something out of that answer.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Clauser? Sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I hope to not see you at a professional level.
Yeah.
Any other matters to be brought before the council, and then we'll go to public comment? Okay, I'll take that as there's none. Any public comment here in the audience? All right? Any public comment from our digital participants?
Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
You may want to explain to these kids that are here that it looks like we just all agree all the time.
Yeah, you're lucky, you came to an easy one.
And we have the workshop meetings where we discuss, and I just think, God, don't they ever talk about anything? They just say yes?
Yeah, that's a very good
I don't want them to think that.
No, that's, Barbie, you make a very good question, and a very good point. We have, we have committee meetings where there's building and grounds, public safety, and so forth, and they meet, they're sort of specialists in their individual area, and they meet between monthly and quarterly, depending on what's on their agendas. And then the third Wednesday of every month, we have a, basically a finance workshop, which would have been last Wednesday night, where we really get down in the weeds, if you will, to Dr. Rob's point, about some of the different issues, and we discuss all of that for this meeting, and that essentially puts the issues that are on the agenda in the public sector, where it becomes public record. So additionally, then, if any, anyone in the public, any of our constituents and so forth, have any question, they have a week to kind of register in on those issues. And then we have this as the, essentially, the formal board meeting, where we do the actual voting. So this seems to go relatively smooth, and this meeting, fortunately, did go relatively smoothly. But the, the real, I don't know, meat of, and the, of the work is done in the committee meetings, and then the summarization of that is the third Wednesday. And you're all welcome to attend any one of those. The agendas are posted.
So last week was the octagon meeting.
Say again?
The octagon meeting.
There you go. But, you know, you're all welcome to attend any of those, if you care to.
This makes it difficult, because one of the requirements here is pick pros and cons, and who, and which side you, you agree on everything, so they have nothing to talk about.
Come to the win, the third Wednesday, you'll find that that's totally different.
We argue and fight, so.
Usually, when we came, there was some really big thing that they
Well, I should have been here last week.
When's the public safety
Yeah, come to public safety in February.
We're building your grounds is a good one, too. There's a lot
Public safety. What is that?
But we thank you all for coming. I, I wish you all the best in your we scout endeavors. I'm a big fan.
Some of them are shopping for a camping trip this weekend, and they already have the merit badge, so we kind of split them in half.
Okay.
All right. Again, thank you for coming. The February Borough Council meetings are, are drawn out here. Do we have any further comments that we want to?
I got a couple of brief ones, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, sir.
One, I just want to make it, put it on the record that I personally, and I believe we all appreciate, the, the participation that we've had recently from the residents and the people coming here and commenting, and, and with putting a time device on them, we don't mean to stop them from, you know, doing that. We wish them to continue to, to participate as much as they can. And I think that's super important, that's what we're here for. We're here to listen to them, and it's appreciated. So, that being said, too, I also, chief, both chiefs, but, but the chief of police, I've seen your, your squad cars all through the first ward. Just want to let you know, we appreciate that, seeing you guys. I've been watching to see, you know, I got video cameras in front of my place of business and my home, and, and I'm seeing you guys, and I, I, you've been picking it up, they're, they're out there, they're moving, and we appreciate seeing that as well, so. And you know, the fire department, I love you.
We don't want you to see
We don't want to see you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Okay?
And the only other thing, Brian, thank you for speaking up on the issue of, you